Thank you. Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council from March the 11th, 2020. A little after 6:00 because we just got out of an executive session. But I need a motion that we do come out of executive session and that the regular meeting be reconvened.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Fear. Roll call vote that we come out of executive session, regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Oh, no.
Second.
Sorry, Pat. All right, I got it first, second, I need a roll call.
Pullman?
Yes.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Muller? Yes, and it's approximately 6:08. Thank you for putting up with us, for being a few minutes late in the executive session. We're going to, before we do a roll call for the regular meeting, I'm going to mention we're going to institute some council meeting rules based upon the CDC and Governor DeWine's precautions. And we're going to treat them very seriously as they should be for respiratory virus, the COVID-19. There will be an audience of citizens. However, the audience of citizens will be specific questions about specific agenda items. Specific questions about specific agenda items. Non-agenda item issues can be addressed by an email to the city. We will still be very, very responsive, but for reasons that you're hearing about on a daily basis on the news, and based to being a respiratory type of illness, virus, excuse me, we're just going to have that specific reason for audience of citizens. So, since we are kind of changing the procedure a little bit, so we must make a motion that we handle the meeting in that particular manner for March 11th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Please.
To make this any easier or to clarify it more, for instance, when someone would sign in to the audience of citizens, would they put the item number that's on the agenda that they want to speak about so that...
There may not even be a sign-in book. If there's a sign-in book, we've got it right in front of me. So, I even heard of sign-up books with pens is a way of spreading this virus. What I'll do is, is I will, I say two names on here, and I'll just ask if either one of your items are truly going to be agenda item or non-agenda item issues, okay? Without going into great detail, Jim, are you here to talk about an agenda item issue?
Like, what's with me when I agenda item?
Well, our 1 through 21. We have 21, 22 items on the agenda.
No, no, no.
Okay, well, then you can send an email to your good friend, Rich Engel, and that will probably resolve that issue. We'll dialogue through email, but not at a public meeting because we want to hear about public meetings and the warnings about public meetings. We're kind of trying to handle these the way we've been advised by CDC, Governor DeWine, and others.
Well, how do you, I understand, but how do you, I'm just seeing what Rich Engel was about the police.
Okay, well...
I'll talk to Mr. Loneman.
That'll be fine.
I spoke to him prior to the meeting start, and I'll speak to him afterwards.
That takes care of your item. Mr. Hancock, is your issue involving a specific agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, then, if the city manager can't talk to you after the meeting, I'll talk to you after the meeting. You will get a response from the city this evening to some degree, okay? That's the only two people I see who signed the book this evening, okay? So, that takes care of audience of citizens, so there will not be an audience of citizens. As well, we will not have an actual, we need the whole, where we usually have presentations and reports, because you can tell we do not have very members of our city staff here this evening, based upon what other cities and agencies are doing, by not having their in-house employees appearing at public meetings. So, there's a motion and a second, but I want to make sure I answer any council's questions about why we're doing it this way, and we can also ask the city manager, are we doing similar to other cities and counties and public agencies you're doing your, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I think Ms. Farrar will be giving a report tonight, and she probably can touch on some more of the specifics with respect to that. But the city of Cincinnati declared a city emergency earlier this afternoon. Obviously, Governor DeWine was on the news media earlier this afternoon also, talking about precautions. I think at this point, it's just simply trying to be as precautious as possible, as cautious as possible, so that until we get some better information about how things are spreading and how we're trying to minimize certain interactions until it gets better. And I know in talking with Kay Farrar, when you were in your executive session, that just as an example, the entire country of Italy has gone on lockdown except for grocery stores and pharmacies, and that's what we're trying to stay away from. If we can stop the spread early, it will have a positive downstream impact for us.
Thank you.
My understanding, please, go ahead.
So, my question is, so you said for March 11th, is this on a week-by-week basis we'll decide?
I think it's going to have to be kind of as every two weeks. What, has it spread to a great degree like it did like in Washington State at nursing homes, like it did in Italy? You know, it might decrease. I mean, I'm not going to sit here and say, I think it's going to happen because I don't think it is.
Sure.
But I think we'll just take it meeting by meeting, and this is really a day-by-day situation. So, but I'm hoping that we have other meetings like this, but we might. But we're relying upon healthcare professionals and state of emergencies, basically.
Thank you.
Any other questions on council? Or any other suggestions on how to handle this? Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call that we kind of amend our usual agenda in this manner.
Pullman?
Yes.
Fear?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Nab?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Okay. Okay, we've done the roll call, we've done the motion, we talked about how we're going to handle or not really have an audience of citizens. Might be a good time for offering a prayer by Councilmember Michael Ryan. Please stand if you are able.
Please bow your heads. Lord, please continue to guide our city, our city council, and our management teams with the decisions we make to better our community. Please continue to protect our police officers and our firefighters and keep them out of harm's way. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who have an agenda, we did have three special presentations, and they were, the first two were really, really good ones. We hope to have those as soon as we possibly can. They have to do with the hype, proclaiming Pastor Shaq, Lloyd McKenzie Thirley, who raised money for Australia's bushfire issue. But we are going to have the very important one, coronavirus COVID-19 presentation by our health commissioner, Kay Farrar.
Thank you, members of council and mayor, audience of citizens. So, we are here today to talk about the novel coronavirus now known as COVID-19. It is a novel virus in that it has never before been recognized or known to the human body. This virus first became known to us in the human form in December 2019. That's critical for you to know how rapidly this has evolved. Whoops, sorry, you gave me the... So, basically, it is spread through coughing, sneezing, and close personal contact. The symptoms are fever, cough, difficulty breathing. The symptoms typically start 2 to 14 days after exposure, and the reason that it's such a concern for public health and all of us is because it's new, it's not predictable like the flu. There is currently no vaccine available, and there is no treatment. So, treatment would be in the form of an antiviral. Most people know that if you have the typical seasonal flu and you go to see a doctor within 24 hours, they're able to prescribe Tamiflu or one such antiviral. It significantly decreases your response to the flu, and oftentimes you can feel well in a day or two after being on an antiviral. Currently, we do not have an antiviral for COVID-19. Obviously, scientists are busy trying to develop one. That will probably get launched out way prior to a vaccine against COVID, so we're anxiously waiting. The path to where we can use it is a much shorter path than a vaccine. So, we believe that the medication will come out first, mainly because most of the antivirals do not have an effect on the body, a negative effect on the body, so it's really not contraindicated in anyone even with heart disease, lung disease, older people. You can pretty much give it to anybody, and it's not going to cause harm, so that's what we're waiting for. And again, this has only been identified in humans since 2019. In Ohio, currently, we have four cases. Three of them live in Cuyahoga County. The husband and wife had just returned from a Nile cruise. They were exposed and known to positive cases, so that's a kind of known pathway. The other unrelated case was also a male, mid-50s. He attended the APEC conference in Washington, DC, was also exposed to a known case. The fourth case that was announced today by the governor and the Ohio Department of Health Director, Amy Acton, was a case in Stark County. It's a male in his mid-50s. He is hospitalized. He had no known association with anyone having traveled or positive for COVID. So, this signals that new era where we're talking about community spread, which is way different than being spread via contact with a known person. There are zero deaths in Ohio. There are currently 24 persons under investigation. I know people don't like initials, but we call those PUIs in public health. Those PUIs are people that live in Ohio that have symptoms, were known to have been in contact with someone that had COVID-19, and/or just returned from one of the countries known to have community spread. So, there are five countries that are included in that group. So, those people have had tests drawn on them and have been sent off to the Ohio Department of Health lab, and we are anxiously waiting the results. The other 255 are under what's called supervision or monitoring. So, what monitoring is, is they are known to us, public health. They are people who have come back from a country known to have free-flowing COVID-19. They have absolutely no symptoms themselves. It's just that they happen to have traveled through or been in a country known to have widespread spread of COVID. So, what we are doing with those individuals, we, public health, whoever's jurisdiction they live in, we call them once a day, and they're put into a system called REDCAP, and we monitor and chart their temperatures twice a day for 14 days. So, they're in what we call a self-monitoring state. They are isolated, but we're just monitoring them from afar. In the United States, now, this is all up-to-date as of 3:11 at 2:00 p.m. It changes hourly, so the CDC changes their data at 4:00 p.m. So, this could be off. I'm just warning you, it's that fluid. But in the United States, there were a total of 647 cases as of 2:00 p.m. There were 25 deaths. It includes jurisdictions reporting from 36 different states, including the District of Columbia. So, we're basically moving from containment to mitigation. And basically, in the initial phases, we were trying to contain the virus to as small a geographical area as we could. Once you start knowing that it's spreading in ways that you're, you don't have an idea of how it's spreading, you move to mitigation. And mitigation is literally trying to limit the impact on communities. So, that includes the economic impact, the toll to our health systems, the toll to all of us. So, that's why you're seeing the changes in recommendations for how you conduct business on a day-to-day basis. So, the best way to limit spread of a disease when there's no vaccine and no medicine is to do social distancing. That's what we're trying. I know I heard a lot of uproar in the House here today. They are not sure that this is going to work, and they're very unsettled. But all I can tell you is, we're going to have to live a little bit uncomfortable for a while. That's how I think of it, you know, with the greater good in mind. You know, we are used to being able, we're from a very rich nation and a rich city where we're able to do pretty much what we want to do, when we want to do it. We're going to have to kind of scale back on that and live uncomfortably. As Joshua was alluding to, we're trying not to be Italy. We don't want to be closed everywhere except grocery stores and pharmacies. So, do your best to bear with us, stay calm. We're working towards a means. So, what we are recommending at this time, the biggest recommendation that we've made recently, and there are a couple more, this has changed yet again, but we have currently sent out letters to all of our nursing homes. We did that. We are working in unified command, all three health jurisdictions in Butler County. We want to stay on the same page so that everybody's getting the same message, so that one nursing home doesn't say, how's come this is happening here, but not here. So, we are recommending very limited visitors. The governor may come out tomorrow and say absolutely none. There have been, in our recommendations, we allowed them to make it stricter rather than more lenient, but very limited was how we worded it. The governor today quoted one visitor per day. We want only one entrance for both visitors, vendors, and staff. Everyone is to be screened for fever, cough, and shortness of breath, and they're really to freely turn away people if they're ill. We want signs posted for good and frequent hand hygiene. We want restriction of mass gatherings and groups at the facilities. You know, a lot of these nursing homes have the kiddos come and sing and do some productions for them. It's really a time to really stop and not do that. The elderly are being most affected by COVID. If you look at the death rates right now, the median age for death from COVID across the world is about age 80. The median age for people having consequences needing supportive care, meaning hospitalization, is 60 and above. So, that's not to say other people aren't getting it or getting ill, but they're not getting as bad of a case that requires a lot of supportive care. So, the government, governor has recommended sporting events to go on, but no or very limited spectators, specifically parents only. He has suspended visitation in Ohio prisons and state youth detention centers. Today, I spoke with Sheriff Jones, and we decided to close our jail and our juvenile detention center from visitors, and that would be mostly because that sits in the city of Hamilton. Again, we're trying to conserve our need for outreach and to care for individuals who get sick, and gatherings in lobbies waiting to speak to prisoners is just one place where, again, we could spread. He also has suspended visitation, or he has recommended that religious institutions start beginning to look at alternative ways for people to celebrate their religious services. And that can be anywhere from maybe not drinking out of the same cup to not doing a handshake at the sign of peace, depending on what religious organization you're with. It could mean a lot of things, but he's asking that all religious leaders look at their current practices and what could be held back and what should go on. So, that's all I have on that, but I have one other important slide that I wanted to share with you. Hopefully, this explains it a little bit better. So, it's called flattening the curve. So, as we've already spoken, you know, this is in an epidemic form. So, if you look at an epi curve, it shows you the number of cases, how quickly they rise, and then they taper off. Well, that height up there, that peak, is the concern for us because it equates to lots of EMS runs, hospitalizations, you know, our hospitals get to capacity. You know, it puts a tax on businesses. We're trying to flatten out that curve. Does that mean we may decrease the number of people affected? Maybe not, but at least we spread it out over a longer period of time where we can handle it, where it's easier for us to look at the numbers and be able to say, yeah, Fort's got that many beds, you know, we don't have to go into Plan B. We have Plan B set up. Public health is very deep. We're ready to go as we need to go, but we'd rather do the flattened curve where we have the capacity to take care of everyone properly without having to commandeer a hotel and turning it into a hospital or et cetera. So, that's all I have for you. Are there any questions, or does that make sense?
Any questions?
So, one large area that you didn't mention was the schools. I assume the schools are working with you and healthcare professionals?
Absolutely. We're working with the schools, and we've met with them a couple of times. We're meeting with them further. At this point in time, we have not closed down the elementary schools. Of course, as you know, there's bigger consequences to that. We've told them to start thinking about alternative situations, about remote classrooms, but the bigger piece is what happens to those kiddos at home and who cares for them? You know, there's single parents out there that are working. So, it's a bigger dive, but, you know, it is on the radar, and we're discussing it, talking about it, and trying to come up with a solution.
Thank you.
But we are working with the schools.
Other questions? I have one real quick. The word respiratory came up in some show I was watching over the weekend. It's a respiratory type of, what does that mean exactly?
Respiratory illness just means that it's coughing, it affects the lungs. It usually enters the body through the eyes, nose, and mouth. That's why we're really encouraging people to look at their habits. We all have habits. You know, I think the funniest one, public health can laugh at ourselves, is there was a YouTube video of a public health figure, and she was telling about, let's not talk or touch our eyes, face, and mouth, and during the thing, she's like, turn the page, you know? So, we all have habits. It's just trying to break those and really think through them, but that's how a respiratory illness enters the body, is, it's usually in droplet form. COVID, as a side note, the CDC is not willing to back off and make it only a droplet. They're still have it as an airborne illness, which is why in the hospitals and et cetera, you'll see people in the full pepper, and they're all decked out. They look like they're going into the war, you know, the white suits, the whole piece. They're also being kept in a negative airflow room. It's, again, our attempt to use the utmost caution because we don't have this completely figured out yet, and there's a lot of way smarter people than me looking at it and trying to figure it out.
Question?
Yes.
Truth to the fact that there is, I've heard that flu shot, does it help you at all if you had a flu shot that can prevent against it? And I think the other concern is, is I hear that, you know, people are getting over this without, you know, without some medicines that, you know, or vaccines right now, they can get over it.
Right.
It's not like you're automatically, if you get it, you're gone.
It's not.
And that's what I think a lot of people should know on this, but the flu shot, I've heard somebody said, flu shot would help you if you had it, could help you.
It does not, but keep in mind, we are still in the middle of flu season, and we are still seeing very large numbers of the flu. So, in, again, when we're talking about public health and trying to conserve our resources, we need those masks and those gowns and everything else for COVID. So, get your flu shot still. We don't want you to have the flu in the first place, but it allows us, again, to push back and use the masks and all the isolation supplies for COVID rather than having to use it for the flu. People, you know, 300,000 or 3,000 Ohioans die every year of the flu, every single year. So, that's the average number. It's not a funny illness. It's not something to spoof off. It is mostly elderly as well, so it does not harm. If people have not gotten the flu shot or had the opportunity, we have flu shots here. They can call me, they can come in. They can't afford one otherwise. I'm the person to contact. So, the flu shot is still critical and important, but it will not protect you from COVID. They are, scientists are, and there's three pharmacy productions trying to make a vaccine against COVID. That will be a longer process. If you'll remember back to 2009, and I was here, it took them about 18 months to develop the H1N1, and then we did mass vaccinations. We actually did our first one at the fairground, and all three health departments were together along with a lot of MRC volunteers and whoever we could get, and we vaccinated about, I think we did 20,000 that first day, and then we continued on and went to hospitals and every other place that we could to vaccinate. But it's on the radar, it's just we can't wait for it. And as far as, you can get this but not be deathly ill, because, again, people get the flu, and it's different in everyone's body. Some people are mildly ill, some people are gravely ill. So, there's no way for anyone to predict what your body's going to do to it. That's why the social distancing is so important. Not only do we want to spread and lower the curve, but we want to take care of human beings and save lives. So, the death rate on COVID is higher than the mortality rate of the regular seasonal flu. At this point, we're watching it. It's sitting somewhere close to 20% mortality rate. The flu this year, which we just had a pretty bad one, I believe is only at about 2%, so big difference. Yeah, you know, people throw out numbers. There's a lot more people who have had the flu than have had COVID. But again, we want to look at the severity of an illness, and it's not, it's not recognized by our bodies. It's not been in the human population.
Mayor?
Please.
Kay, I want to go back to one of the things that you said about how things change like at 4:00 every day, and a program I was listening to today said that we need to take responsibility to know what's going on and to not just listen to what other people say, to even put the CDC's webpage on your screensaver, everything, and to check it yourself to become smart instead of just...
Yes.
All due respects to Eric to say, I heard this.
Yes.
That's what gets people in trouble.
Yes.
So, read it yourself and know what's going on.
Yes, very much so. And the state of Ohio has a page designated just for COVID. It's coronavirus.ohio.gov. It is, it is updated every day, 2:00. That's what time they update. CDC's update is at 4:00. I have both of those bookmarked as well as the WHO, which is the World Health Organization. That gives you a more global feeling for what's going on. I look at all three because we're learning lessons from other countries. We're learning lessons from Washington State. That's the best we have right now, is just lots of research and then taking responsibility and doing some social distancing and doing the best that we can.
Can you repeat that, Ohio?
It's coronavirus.ohio.gov.
Any other questions?
Mayor, just maybe just a very short update. I think first and foremost, we do appreciate Governor DeWine's leadership and how seriously he has taken this, and we're certainly going to follow the state's lead because they get information which gets passed down to the various... information which gets passed down to the various health districts within the state. At a very local level, we've established a call-in number, so seven days a week, the large management team has a scheduled call at 9:00 a.m., so we're being apprised of the latest information. We will give council any updates from that 9:00 a.m. phone call, but there's 14 members of the large management team that will be on that call based on their availability on a daily basis. And, again, we hope all this is simply an overabundance of caution, and I truly think the next couple of days, it's going to be a little bit more clear how severe or how non-severe this is going to be, but right now, I think it's just with all the information that the state has provided and the fact that they've canceled the public sections of the Jobs Ohio Meeting tomorrow, and Ready Cincinnati has canceled their annual meeting, at least to the public, that tells us that the state, they're taking this very seriously, and we're just trying to monitor it from that same type of perspective.
Well, and I believe that there's some hospitals that, like they say, "Don't just come to the hospital if you don't feel well." Like, you call, and they'll come out and check you in your car to tell you. Is that something that we're doing here locally?
It is. So, if I... There's a 24/7 hotline that I get calls from, so I don't know if you've ever tried to call me at night, but it says, "If this is a public health emergency, please call this number." It's DPIC. It's Drug and Poison Information Center. Southwest Ohio pays them to take our calls. They know where I'm at 24/7. So, I take those calls either from individuals, from doctors, from hospitals, from ERs, with questions where they say, "We have somebody coming in. We need some advice." You know, "Here's the travel history, et cetera." And so, we're able to divert or take somebody to a different spot if we know there's no beds here because we need those negative airflow rooms. So, that, we need to know where they're available, and I'm usually calling around, speed dialing.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Health Commissioner Kay, for our...
You're welcome.
Thank you for your leadership in this. Okay, that's our special presentation. We now go to the Senate Agenda. That includes all matters like Privilel Minutes, all staff reports, receive and file council information, caucus reports, and the 2019 Hamilton Municipal Court Annual Report, as well as all the items on the caucus agenda. And I believe that we next have to accept the... I have a motion that council receive those caucus agenda reports in concordant recommendation.
Move.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pullman, second by Councilmember Knapp. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. We now go to council actions pertaining legislative items and now accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council has furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Hearing none, that motion is carried. We now go to pending legislation. Agenda item number four, second reading of the ordinance involving conditional use at 1301 Grand Boulevard.
In ordinance granting a conditional use certificate and approval for 1301 Grand Boulevard for multifamily residential with first-floor commercial space property located in B-2 Community Business Zoning District situated in the 5th Ward, City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, Community Design Alliance applicant, Community Design Alliance applicant on behalf of Generative Investment Group's LLC property owner.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any council discussion or comment at this time? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
We go to agenda item number five, second reading of the ordinance involving the South Hamilton Crossing Project area.
In ordinance vacating portions of right-of-way at the South Hamilton Crossing SHX Project Area, including Grand Boulevard, Dixie Highway, Central Avenue, East Avenue, Marshall Avenue Alley, and Pleasant Avenue Alley situated in the 6th Ward, North Side, City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Any council discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
Let's record reflected on the screen here in the council chambers. We do the titles of legislation as well as various photographs of the properties, maps of the right-of-way areas, and other various attachments to the legislation. Now go to agenda item number six, second reading of the ordinance involving also public right-of-ways located at South Hamilton Crossing.
In ordinance approving the attached depiction plat for public right-of-ways located at South Hamilton Crossing, SHX, 6th Ward, North Side, City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Knapp, second by Councilmember Brown. Any questions or comments about this one? Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
Go to agenda item number seven, second reading of the ordinance involving vacating a portion of South E Street Alley.
In ordinance vacating a portion of South E Street Alley, portion between Ross Avenue Alley and Franklin Street situated in the 1st Ward, South Side, City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio, City of Hamilton applicant.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Vice Mayor Pullman, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Any council discussion about this one? Okay, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
Go to agenda item number eight, second reading of the ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property to self supports to encourage low-income families, 227 North 11th Street.
In ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located in the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to support and encourage low-income families self, 227 North 11th Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Knapp, second by Councilmember Fear. For the record, Councilmember Brown and I will be abstaining because we are on self's board. Any comments or questions from council at this time? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Abstain.
Mueller.
Abstain.
Ordinance adopted, 5-0-2 abstentions.
We go to agenda item number nine, second reading of the emergency ordinance involving holiday leave with pay.
An emergency ordinance amending section 181.27 of chapter 181 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio regarding holiday leave with pay and repealing section 181.27 as it currently exists.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Vaughn, second by Councilmember Fear. Discussion about this one, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. City Clerk.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
The agenda item number 10 is a second reading emergency ordinance involving a contract for sale and purchase of natural gas.
An emergency ordinance waiving requirements of chapter 171 of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio and authorizing execution of an extension of the contract for sale and purchase of natural gas between the City of Hamilton, Ohio and Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC and related transaction documentation, including a transaction confirmation and asset management agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan.
I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Ryan, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Any discussion about this one? This is one that we heard a report on from Executive Director Jim Logan involving how this is saving City of Hamilton a significant amount of money.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I had a conversation with Mr. Logan right before the council meeting this evening. What the savings is allowing us to do, we're going to monetize that savings and take the money and use that to pay for the Main Street improvements that took place this past January. Otherwise, the option was to raise the gas rates. I want to give Jim Logan and his team credit for being very proactive, getting this done. Our gas rates will stay unchanged, and due to the renegotiation of the gas pricing, it allows us to absorb that $600,000-plus cost due to those emergency measures we had to take in January of 2020.
That's just great management. Great management. Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at 7-0.
We now go to new legislation, two reads of emergency ordinance involving taxable economic development revenue bonds.
An emergency ordinance amending emergency ordinance number EOR 2019-6-46 for the purpose of the authorization of the issuance and sale of taxable economic development revenue bonds, series 2020 of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in the maximum principal amount of $29,900,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
I move the rules be suspended and set ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Knapp, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Knapp.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, 7-0.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending emergency ordinance number EOR 2019-6-46 for the purpose of the authorization and the issuance and sale of taxable economic development revenue bonds, series 2020 of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in the maximum principal amount of $29,900,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp. I move that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Mr. Councilmember Knapp, second by Councilmember Vaughn. Any discussion amongst council or is Council or Assemblyman joining to make a comment at this time?
If I may, I spent a lot of time thinking about this agenda item tonight, and to give it due credit, it really takes us back to 2011 when Smart Paper, which was the successor of Champion Paper, took over the former Champion site. And I remember those days being very dark for us as we had many conversations about what to do, about what was once our largest private employer in the City of Hamilton and that employed generations of families. And to sit here today at what is the last piece of financing for the Spooky Nook Mixed Juice Redevelopment Project, it's just, it's been a long, almost 10 years to get to that point, but the one thing that I, that I'm very happy about, when you think about 2011, where we were from a local economy standpoint in the past, call it nine to 10 years, with the diversification of our economy, with influx coming, which is wholly owned by Procter &amp; Gamble, with 80 acres, developing multiple locations within the city, infinite acres, Salvigni putting on a new $8 million addition as we speak, Bilstein growing by over 700 employees during that same timeframe. It's really been gratifying to see our local economy become more diverse, but also more forward-looking. The fact that we've grown our annual payroll by over $300 million in that time, same timeframe, shows us that even though we've not done anything, in my mind, that was a huge number of employees, but we've been, I think, very good about bringing in the Kirsch CPAs and recruiting the TriHealth, which is a nice balance to Fort Hamilton Kettering in terms of healthcare employees. But bringing us back to this, Andy Brosart's here. S&amp;P gave us a very good credit rating on this deal. They gave us an A-plus rating. I think in my tenure here, the highest rating we've had with S&amp;P's been a double A-minus, so that's just one step below that, but an A-plus is certainly something better than what I was expecting. It puts us on par with what Moody's has given us in the last couple of years in terms of a general credit rating, but this is the last and final piece to this. The only thing I want to note is that this is a little bit higher than what we had talked about in the past because the PACE amount was reduced in a corresponding fashion, so the PACE bonds were decreased, the non-tax revenue were increased, but, again, it's the same amount. Again, the developer pays the debt service on both PACE and the non-tax revenue, but I talked to him today, he's actually, Sam Byler is in town as we speak. He actually asked if he should be here tonight. He had some development meetings planned. I encouraged him to stay with his development meetings, but I can tell he was incredibly excited, and there's certainly going to be challenges with traffic in the next couple of years as the construction accelerates quickly in the next 30 days, and I think that Jim Logan and his team have a good plan in place. The temporary traffic signals, if you've not noticed, are already in place and ready to be turned on and activated. I talked to the general contractor this morning. They've, and I think I sent council earlier today, their weekly report indicating all the different subs that have been hired, so you're going to see a lot of activity over there. The goal is the same today as it was six months ago. They want a temporary occupancy permit for the Mill 2 side or the Riverside of the complex by 12/31 of '21. That way, they can maximize the federal and state historic tax credits that were awarded two years ago. So, it's going to be an exciting time, and with council's permission, I would like to add a council report, starting at the next council meeting through the end of construction, so we can notify the public of what's taking place, keep council fully apprised, no different than we did for South Hamilton Crossing about seven years ago.
And if you could include photos or videos of what's going on over there, that would be good for the audience and...
Absolutely.
Great.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Knapp.
Congratulations to everyone in the stamina, the work ethic, the visits of what Spooky Nook will bring to our city. The journey that we have been on for the last nine years since the closure of Smart Paper and following Champion, the promise that we all made to bring a diverse industry base to the City of Hamilton has been brought to fruition today, not only with the businesses that Joshua mentioned, but the small businesses, the people that are coming to Hamilton wishing for betterment of their established businesses. Some are ground floor up and some are existing, some are franchisees that we are aware of, some are independent businesses, but as Joshua said, the $300 million in growth that the city has appreciated these past years are all with the promise of our future. We all listened to what Kay shared this evening about what's going on globally, what's affecting businesses, what's affecting our 401Ks, our investment portfolios and things. This too will return. The integrity of the United States of America, the integrity of the State of Ohio, the integrity of the City of Hamilton are all influential in where we can promise people will be a year from now, two, three, four, five years down the road. None of us saw the coronavirus coming, and as Kay shared with us earlier, in December of 2019, four short months ago, the world became a place where now a unstoppable, to date, an unstoppable virus is affecting all of us globally. We're positioned well, the leadership in the city, from the workers in the city, all 600-plus people are consciously doing their jobs as we promised before. The attention to detail is there from the top down. Your elected officials are made, as the mayor said, made aware daily of what's going on and what's taking place in our city. So if the residents have any questions, please feel free to call that hotline that's been established. There was a call the other day that someone had left on a, a city phone. It's because workers aren't sitting at their city phones to take a message and talk live, they're out working, and they get back to our residents with an appropriate response within a day or two of their, of their wish to be notified on what's taking place. But again, short and sweet, Joshua, congratulations on these steps, and we can't wait for the next five to ten years to take place. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd say the jobs through economic development will improve our city, our county, and our region. Okay. Roll call vote, if there's any other comments.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped, seven zero.
We go to agenda item number twelve, two rings of emergency ordinance involving the High Energy Special Improvement District and Hamilton Community Authority and other matters.
Emergency ordinance repealing ordinance number EOR two-zero-one-nine-dash-seven-dash-fifty-nine in ordinance amending to determine, determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in cooperation with the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District One and the Hamilton Community Authority, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Fear, is that you, Vice Mayor Pullman?
Yeah, it's both of us. It was me.
Okay. First, Councilmember Fear, second by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote, please, on the motion.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of that emergency ordinance.
An emergency ordinance repealing ordinance number EOR two-zero-one-nine-dash-seven-dash-fifty-nine in ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in cooperation with the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District One and the Hamilton Community Authority, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Councilmember Fear, Senate Councilmember Brown. Any discussion about this emergency ordinance? Are you done? Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at seven zero.
Now turn to agenda item number thirteen, two readings of emergency ordinance about public improvements, and again, the Butler County, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District, Hamilton Community Authority.
An emergency ordinance repealing emergency ordinance number EOR two-zero-one-nine-dash-seven-dash-sixty in ordinance levying special assessments for the public, for the purpose of acquiring construction and improving certain public improvements in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in cooperation with the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District One and the Hamilton Community Authority, authorizing a cooperative agreement and other related actions related of, to financing of special energy improvement projects, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Take a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance repealing ordinance number EOR two-zero-one-nine-dash-seven-dash-sixty in ordinance levying special assessments for the purpose of acquiring construction and improving certain public improvements in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, in cooperation with the City of Hamilton, Butler County, Ohio Energy Special Improvement District One and the Hamilton Community Authority, authorizing a cooperative agreement and other related actions related to the financing of special energy improvement projects, and declaring an emergency.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Take a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, Senate Councilmember Vaughn. Discussion, comments, or questions about this one? Roll call vote then, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number fourteen, two rings of an ordinance involving an agreement between the City of Hamilton and the Butler County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a contribution agreement between the City of Hamilton and the Butler County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote, please, on that motion.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a contribution agreement between the City of Hamilton and the Butler County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Fear.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any discussion? Mr. City Manager, this is an example of, of a partnership of the city working together with Butler County.
It is, and so both Butler County and the Butler County Visitors Bureau have participated in the capital costs for Spooky Nook, specifically for the roadway costs on B Street and the ancillary streets. I was with Commissioner Dixon earlier this week, had a great conversation. I think everyone recognizes that it's going to be a, it's a, it's a huge economic benefit to the City of Hamilton, but it's going to have a very regional economic benefit to southwest Ohio.
Definitely. Okay. Any other questions or comments at this time on number fourteen? Roll call vote on number fourteen.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number fifteen, two readings of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Okay. Second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Hamilton during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Ordinance stopped at seven zero.
Now a series of first readings. First readings on agenda item number sixteen, involving real property, Neighborhood Housing Services and Washington Street.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located in the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area, acquired through the Land Bank to Neighborhood Housing Services of Hamilton Incorporated, NHS, three-twenty, three-twenty-six, and three-thirty, Washington Street.
Thank you. Agenda item number seventeen, restraining an ordinance involving Neighborhood Housing Services and one-one-zero-one Lane Street.
An ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property located in the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area, acquired through the Land Bank to Neighborhood Housing Services of Hamilton Incorporated, NHS, one-oh-one, one-one-zero-one Lane Street.
Thank you. We go to agenda item number eighteen, restraining an ordinance involving three-twenty Main Street and Neighborhood Improvement Corporation.
An ordinance for the conveyance of city-owned real property, three-twenty Main Street to the Community Improvement Corporation of Hamilton, Ohio.
Thank you. Agenda item number nineteen, resolution involving transfer of property.
A resolution accepting the transfer of parcels of real property located at two-oh-five North B Street within the City of Hamilton, Ohio, from Todd and Lisa Ruth.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Nab.
Give it to her.
That's seconded by, I'm going to say, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you.
Any questions about this particular resolution? Roll call vote then, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Now go to agenda item number twenty, resolution involving upgrading of traffic signals at an intersection in Hamilton.
A resolution proposing that the City of Hamilton, Ohio, City as a designated local public agency, LPA, cooperate with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, relative to the upgrading of traffic signals at the intersection of South Erie Boulevard, BUT-dash-four, and Grand Boulevard within the City of Hamilton Incorporated Limit, ODOT PID number one-one-zero-four-five-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion that the resolution, that resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. Questions or comments about this one? Are you done? Roll call vote, please.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
Go to agenda item number twenty-one, resolution not accepting the one Ohio memorandum of understanding involving the opioid litigation.
A resolution to accept the one Ohio memorandum of understanding, MOU, in relation to the national prescription opioid litigation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Vice Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Any comments about this, this resolution? Are you done? Roll call vote.
Pullman.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.